...town council Monday, March 19th, 2018 at 9:00 AM in council chambers. And is there any introduction of late items, Mrs. Hilson? No? Okay, could we have a motion, please, to let the, this agenda be adopted? Thank you. Counselor Rhodes, Counselor King, all in favor. Thank you. And we have a delegation today, building smart and caring communities. And we have a presentation from Kim English, the Community Development Officer. So, welcome, Kim. Would you like to come up to the microphone? Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you for welcoming us today. Erin McCran, the Executive Director, might be coming in behind me. We're planning to co-present, but he might do what I, happened last year when I missed co-presenting with him. So, I'm glad to see you this year. So, thank you. So, I am the Regional Coordinator from the Community Foundation, and we're here to talk about neighborhood small grants, and also the power of pool donations, and the Soyeus Community Fund that we've established. So, just as an update to everyone, I know you're quite familiar with the Community Foundation, but we are in our 27th year in the RDOs. We are now $11 million under assets, assets under management, and that has allowed us to award nearly half a million dollars, or $440,000, to about 50 charities throughout the South Okanagan-Semilkenee. So, just as a reminder, an endowment fund is when people give us a donation, 100% of it goes into the endowment fund, and it's the interest gained that we then give back out to the community. Other things that we do in the community beyond the annual grant cycle is bursaries. We give about $40,000 out to the school districts, the students. We also give bursaries to returning students. I'm sorry if I'm talking too quiet here. Neighborhood small grants, which I'll be touching on in just a few minutes. Vital signs. We do workshops in the community of writing grants and estate planning, and also the establishment of local community funds. Thanks. So, neighborhood small grants, this is the third year we are offering this. We're quite excited about this. Neighborhood small grants is a unique funding opportunity for individuals. It's not for charities, societies, or businesses. Oh, go back to relax, husband, that's okay. So, to kind of think of parties with a purpose. So, I put up just a few photos of a few of the neighborhood small grants that we've awarded in the Soyeus in the past few years. So, you can see that there's a Habitat Restoration, Gathering, and of course, everyone here is familiar with the Giving Cupboard that was established two years ago. So, we do Giving Cupboards, Lending Libraries, like I said, Restoration Projects. The goals of Neighborhood Small Grants are to connect and engage, share skills and knowledge, celebrating just the diversity in the community, and building pride. So, within this, I would, Neighborhood Small Grants is really an asset-based community development program. So, the idea, again, with Parties with a Purpose is really, especially in today's society, where we kind of gather with our people on value-based rather than place-based. So, we tend to, you know, go with our like-minded people, and we solve lots of problems for the organizations that we volunteer with, which is fantastic. But neighbors on the street where people live together often aren't connecting as they have in the past, and in part, just we have this migration, large migration that's happening within the province. So, we're building new neighborhoods where people don't know each other. Folks are moving in and out quite a bit. So, the idea is if people start just to even know who each other are, talking about what skills they are, what's important to them, then they'll, the next step is problem-solving their own problems in the neighborhood, rather than coming to government or to the RCMP. So, it could be Party with a Purpose to help slow down traffic congestion, beautification project. But if you want to do something really fun, you're a foodie, or you like to build birdhouses, and you want to share that with your neighborhood, then this is an opportunity. So, again, it's up to $500. People can use the money towards permits, increase their insurance, but we want to see it spent on decorations, craft tables, activities. The application is open for two more weeks until April 4th. It's a really easy online application. The criteria is it needs two people to apply, and then again, it's not connected with a business or a society, or there to beautify common assets. So, I would like to just encourage yourselves to let your neighbors, let your friends know, and to apply, because we've actually, we've awarded just under 50 Neighborhood Small Grants in the past two years, but we can, we're not doing our maximum, so we'd like to see a lot more in each community. Vital signs, I'll just like to say Vital Signs is coming up. Vital signs is our, it will be actually our fourth report. We do this every two years, where we kind of take the temperature in the region. We do a survey that asks folks about how they grade access to education, or additional learning, health, the environment, and then we use that as a tool for us when we review our grants, and we also encourage local government to use it. Last year, pardon me, the previous year when we did Vital Signs survey, the best feedback that we received was from the town of Oliver. They actually put it on their website and encouraged their citizens to apply. So, we had about 1,300 surveys from Oliver filled out. So, we'd certainly like to encourage you also to help us collect that data and information. So, grant-making in the Soyeus, I just want to talk about, again, the power of pool donations, grant-making in the Soyeus in this past several years. Go ahead. So, since 2010, we've granted over $100,000 to charities in Soyeus. These are just a few of the major ones that we have given to over the past several years. Probably 95% of the awards that we've given to come from our unrestricted endowment fund. So, when folks give to the Community Foundation, they may be really specific and say, "We want our gift to go to projects that are focused on youth or seniors," or "I just want it to stay in my community." And so, that is, so when, they don't give us a definition of where they want it to go, it goes into our unrestricted pool. And the benefit for that is the smaller communities all can access that pool. And I'll talk about the Soyeus Community Fund in just a moment there. But, so essentially, a lot of this is coming from gifts from throughout the whole region. Thanks. So, where the grant dollars come from, I've just kind of touched on that. And the Soyeus Community Fund, so we established this, this is actually one of our earlier established community funds. It was established in 2000. The current value is $12,370, so I apologize, I'll correct myself and you on that. In 2018, from the interest gained from that, we distributed $600. So, again, when you're comparing that $100,000-plus number, you can see where we really rely on unrestricted funds to give back to the region. I'm going to, if I can just approach Mayor and Council and hand out these rat cards here. This is a rat card we just recently produced, and we've also created an info sheet on the Soyeus Community Fund. So, I want to share this with you, so you're aware that this exists, and if you're interested, we also encourage you to help promote it.
You gave me some a couple of weeks ago, and they're out, they're out at the front. We put them on the...
Oh, you're the best.
Yes, yeah.
Do you want another?
No, I've got one in my office, thanks.
Thank you. So, this is the work that I'm doing with the support of the Local Advisory Community Group that I work with. We really want to build the profile of the community fund, and let people know that they have a place where they, where they live where they give, or where they live, they can give, very much like Buy Local, Shop Local. We want people to start thinking about giving where they live versus sending it to Toronto or elsewhere. Thanks. So, I'm just going to use the next few minutes just to talk about three different examples that I've pulled from the Nebraska Community Foundation and their affiliated funds. Very much of what we've done is, though we're centralized in Penticton, and that's a real great benefit, is we have a staff of three, full-time staff, but many small community funds are fully supported by volunteers. The Community Foundation of South Okanagan-Semilkenee was volunteer-driven until about 10 years ago, and once we got staff in place, particularly a fantastic executive director, our endowment has jumped 100% in eight years. So, there's a real benefit to having staff. But here, again, Nebraska is a large rural state, and they have passionate people there. One example that I've pulled is the Brown County Endowment Fund. They have 3,100. They, by the end of their campaign, they're going to expect to reach about $1.5 million. They have five confirmed, five confirmed expectancies. So, this is people that, they've let them know that they're going to give to this local fund. But from already from there, they're seeing an impact where, number one, their fund focus is specifically on youth and children, as well as their volunteer fire and rescue unit. And it was so successful, the community also wanted to then do a spin-off of a hospital fund. So, we see the pool of, the power of pool donations on a regional basis with the South Semilkenee Medical Foundation. We know they've almost reached their goal of 20 million, which is incredible, and that is through pool donations. So, they, they also were struggling with that as well. So, their county campaigns, their, their major fundraising campaigns, their money goes partially to their community fund and as well as their hospital fund. The next slide, please. The Shipley Community Fund, I really like this example, because I live in Headley, and the population of Shipley is similar to Headley, and if you combine the Upper Semilkenee Band, they have 11 confirmed gift expectations of $2 million. They already have 60% of their families that are giving to the fund, and that's, again, because they really support childhood development and youth programs. And then the third example I'm going to show you is Holt County. They really focus on rural economic development and supporting innovative and sustainable ideas. This was also their strategy for keeping their youth and their young adults in their community, and drawing back the ones that have moved away, and drawing in new folks. So, you can see they've already created 29 new businesses, and have done quite a bit. Again, they have $5 million in their endowment fund and have 20 confirmed gifts coming along. So, rather than skipping their, they're buying a ti, a one-way ticket for their kid to leave their community and not come back, essentially, they are reinvesting into their community and have really developed a young population base in this rural community. So, really great success stories. We know the power of pool donations, that people want to live where they give. And though we've established the fund some time ago, we haven't really done a major profile event or promotion of it. So, that's really what we're going to focus on going forward in the future. And again, I just wanted to bring this and bring it to everyone's attention, because of course, we'd love it if people came up to you and asked you about it, that you could speak to about it, to some degree, to whatever you're comfortable with, but we'd really hate for you to say, "We have never heard of it. I don't know what you're talking about." So, again, I've got some, Janice is also on my advisory committee, Cheryl King, Dennis Vaughn, and John Robertson. We are also looking to increase our committee, local committee as well. So, I'd just like to put out, if there's anyone that you think that would be a great fit, please let us know. Our asks around this, Mayor Sue was terrific when I was at a, gave a workshop for Neighborhood Small Grants in the Soyeus the other week, talking about the community fund, and one of my asks today was to help with local staff promote it on the website, and I saw it's already been uploaded, so I really appreciate that. Our second ask today was just a continuation of partnership with Neighborhood Small Grants. We do work with staff for the town to be qualified donee on behalf of its awarded citizens, and we'd like to continue that relationship. Again, it's against the law for us as a community foundation to give directly to individuals, so we do have to work with local government to qualify donies to do that. So, that concludes the end of my presentation, and thank you so much, and if you have any questions.
Well, thank you, Kim. We appreciate you coming in, sort of filling us in on this. And we know that Janice, who is on the committee now, did have one of these small community grants down in her neighborhood, and I think it was basically to try and get everybody working together for the safety of the community, because they had a lot of break-ins. So, they shared each other's email addresses and phone numbers, and I believe it was quite successful, and they applied for it again. So, I think these are really fun kinds of things to do, really gets your community working together. So, thank you very much. And Cheryl's, Cheryl's husband is Jim right here, so... Jim, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's important that you let the people of the community know about the Soyeus Community Fund especially, and try to help build that. My other question was, for your bigger funding, what was the timeline or the deadline to submit for the bigger funding?
For the annual grant cycle, we just changed the award timeline last year. So, we now open the grant application in September.
Okay.
I think it's end of September, and it closes in early December, and charities and programs are awarded in early January. And we changed that, we had feedback, we wanted to work closer and have it on a calendar.
Feature year. No, that's great, thank you.
Yes, Counselor Youngberg.
Thanks, Mayor McCordough. If a society makes an application, does, do the funds be paid directly to the society or to the municipality?
Well, with Neighborhood Small Grants, a society is not eligible, it's only for people.
No, this, this is...
The annual, so if it's a society and they don't have a registered charitable number, we will work with another charity that is similar, that has a charitable number, that can take that on.
Oh.
And if they are not comfortable with that, then we will come to local government. Qualified donies legally are local government, Indian bands, and schools.
Okay.
So, we look for a qualified donee, but then that group.
Group.
Okay.
We'll let Counselor Rhodes, and then Counselor King.
Thank you, Madam McCordough. Hi, Kim, thanks for the information. This is always interesting to hear about this. I have two questions. Is the principal amount the amount that you get from contributions? Is it growing at this time at an acceptable rate, or do you know what that is? And I'm also interested in the typical contributor into the fund. I know it's hard to be generic about it, but I'm, is it a corporate-based, or is it, you know, resident-based, or personally, or...
The profile of the donor is really a person that is just philanthropic in heart, wants to give back, and wants to give back locally. We do manage, we manage about 125 funds within our umbrella of the endowment fund. So, some companies actually have established their own funds, where their staff give back directly to it. And then our profile is really, it is broad. It can be a family that decides over Christmas, or holidays, that they want to pool, and they give back. It could be a person that gives $100 or $500 every year. And then there's people that want to leave legacies behind, and they may give 5% up to 100 or 90% of their estate. So, it really is quite broad in that. But, you know, what's great with the, the small local community funds, it really is a place where everyone can give, and it really does quite a large impact. This, the first question, this is where I prefer, when Erin is here, to be really specific. But we, our investments are managed by a company in Vancouver, and I forget their name at the moment, but we usually just use an acronym for it. But our investments are above 5% our return, usually around 10%, 11%. It all depends on each year. In 2009, when the markets crashed, we actually didn't give out the following year, because we just wanted to make sure everything's established. But I can definitely follow up with more specific details. But what I do know is our investment company does a terrific job for us, and we have great returns. Our admin fee is only 1.5%. It was 1% previously, and we just increased it to 1.5. So, we really, again, we don't touch the gift, it's just on the cap.
Thank you. Counselor King.
Thank you, Madam. I just wanted clarity on your bigger grants to be registered for tax. Does that mean you had to be, as a society, you had to be registered and auditable to actually qualify for the bigger funding?
As a, for a charitable number, yes.
Yes.
But that's where we work with societies and other places, because not everyone has gotten to that charitable status.
I just wanted clarity.
Good. Well, thank you very much, Kim, for coming and presenting, and certainly we, you're, this is on Granicus, so people will see this. I believe that Donna put it on our, on our webpage, and, and we have the brochures out the front. So, we will certainly give people information if they request it. So, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, next is the Business Number One, the Accessibility Committee, and that is a report from Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the committee of the whole meeting in November, council requested staff to bring a report forward regarding the need for an accessibility committee. Since the town completed an accessibility audit in 2013, council has approved funding to assist in making the identified changes within that audit. These funds have been used to improve accessibility in town facilities. Some of these changes included auto doors, auto flushers and faucets, handrails at Desert Park and the Sonora Community Center, accessible signs, tactile warning strips, and most recently, the family room at the Sonora Center. Council has increased funding for 2018 and inquired about forming a committee that can evaluate these potential improvements. We have also identified the Age Friendly Project for this year. Council has identified the Community Services Advisory Board to overlook this project once the age-friendly designation is in place, and we are recognized as an age-friendly community. A requirement of the designation is to monitor the progress of the action items that are identified in the results of the Age Friendly Project. However, an accessibility committee has the potential to deliver the goals and streamline accessibility improvements in a more direct fashion. Potential stakeholders who could be part of this committee may include public citizens, town staff, council, and destination of Soyeus. A terms of reference can be developed, and this committee would assist in fast-tracking accessibility issues. Terms of options, proceed with the committee, direct staff to develop terms of reference and provide input into the terms of reference at this meeting. Option two, do not proceed with this type of committee. And option three, use an existing committee to discuss and evaluate accessibility needs. Having a committee in place to address accessibility needs in the community is a great way to keep and monitor the progress of these changes. It also provides another chance for the public to come forward and voice their concerns.
Thank you very much. Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam McCordough, and thank you, Director Davis. So, this is something I'm quite passionate about, and I want to see happen relatively quickly, for all sorts of reasons, and if I sound repetitive, I apologize. But I think we need, especially based on our demographics, we need to go beyond construction code or provincial code when we look at future projects or current renovations of public property and things of that nature. And I think the best way to prioritize those needs moving forward would be to have proper representation on a committee, so that we're not backtracking, we're not going, putting together projects and looking at afterthoughts or challenges, but that we're being proactive in that way. And how I see this committee made up would be certainly somebody from the development construction industry, as well as somebody representing physical disabilities and mental health disabilities, and really to look at this from all angles. I know I've learned a lot from talking to residents like Mike Stiles about some accessibility challenges that have nothing to do with code, and are things that, you know, without walking in other shoes, wouldn't notice or wouldn't realize to be a problem. And the example I'll use, and I've used it before, is beds in hotel rooms. You know, there's no code based on that when we look at accessible rooms. However, in the last, you know, 10, 20 years, mattresses have gone from six inches to a foot and a half, which creates challenges. I wouldn't have known that if I hadn't heard that from people that experienced those challenges. So, I'm not sure if this needs to be moved to a regular meeting to make a motion to move forward with the terms of reference, or if I can make that motion now?
No, this is, it's an administrative direction, so that's what we're looking for, whether, you know, council wants to make that resolution.
Yeah, I'd like to make that resolution, that we proceed with committee, direct staff to develop terms of reference, provide input to the terms of reference at this meeting, and on top of that, to look at the, what the makeup of a committee would look like as far as representation goes.
Thank you. Are you seconding that? Thank you. Can I ask, I just wondered how many people might be a good number for the committee? That was sort of the first thing. You have some suggestions here, but sometimes it's, you know, eight or something is a good number. And the other thing is, I do believe we got a letter from Mike Stiles, who is suggesting that, that there should be a variety of disabilities or people to be put on this committee, and so I think that should be included in, with it as well. Yeah, that's what you meant, I think.
Yeah, so at this time, which is included in the motion, is any ideas that council wants. So, if council wants six on the committee, or seven, if you can provide that direction now, that'll save us coming back and...
As part of the original motion?
Well, the motion includes, and provide input to the terms of reference at this meeting. So, if council wants input into the terms of reference, you can provide it now after the motion, if the motion is approved.
So, we'll deal with the motion first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that a seconder?
We have. Counselor Rhodes seconded that. All in favor? Thank you. So, now we need to deal with specifics, if it's needed.
If council feels they have some input into the terms of reference, they want to make it this time, it'll just save us time.
So, I did have a number in my head, but I'd like to get Director Davis's opinion too, and I thought a committee of six would make sense.
I honestly think that if we hit the greater number of people, that this would solve some of the issues in town, and I know it's not an easy one, as Counselor Campbell has said. We have seen some changes in the last three to four years, especially with our audit that's in place. That's a great starting point for us to look at, review, which we have started. We have myself, our CAO, and our Director of Operations in the past looked at some of these things, and brought some of the greater items forward. If we have a, you know, a committee of up to six people, I think if it's greater than six people, and nobody wants to make a decision, it might be difficult. But I think of those people, having somebody with a disability, and also a cognitive disability, would be very good. And you're right, we do see things in a different light. When you're in a wheelchair, if you're blind, or you can't hear, you know, there's a whole bunch of different things that you need to deal with. And if, and if they're brought to the limelight, and they're dealt with, you know, and they're brought forward, that would be an excellent idea, for sure.
So, and I, and I totally agree. I'm just wondering if six is enough, if you've already got, so, three from, say, three staff, and then three public, is it possible to leave at between six and eight?
Well, we wouldn't include the staff number in...
Oh, okay. Fair enough. I thought you were including them, that was half of it already. Sorry.
Yeah, that was my comment, Madam Mayor. I wouldn't set it on an exact number, I'm looking at the term reference here in Seashell. And they say six to 10. I'm not saying we go with that number, but I think if you leave some latitude, so it doesn't have to be exactly six, like if it's five to eight, or five to seven, or something. Gives you a little flexibility in case that one extra person really wants to be on.
Is that okay? Just to leave it like that, that there's a little bit of flexibility there?
Sure, just a matter of what, you know, I think, you know, what we've done in committees in the past is set to a maximum of, and so, if, if council can identify that maximum, it would be helpful at this time.
Maximum of eight?
Eight, maximum of eight.
You okay with that? Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay. Does that work?
Yes.
You need a motion to that.
And can I just ask, that the age-friendly project, so this is kind of, the age-friendly will sort of be tied in with this, and that will work, that's what you mentioned in your report.
Yes, that'll be on the cusp of this. The age-friendly project, once it is started, there will be a committee struck, and this could be that committee. The terms of reference can be directly related to this that we're talking about right here. It can be an established, you know, committee of council, and we can actually have that as part of that actually age-friendly process.
Does it make sense?
Of the proposals that we received, at least two proposals identified another group to do that kind of thing. There was originally a motion from council to... There was originally a, a motion from council to address, you know, the, the needs for this committee to oversee the age-friendly process, and that's what, it is part of the Community Services Advisory Committee. But in more detail, it can be part of this new committee for accessibility.
So, so as a suggestion, maybe we would call it the Age and Accessibility Friendly Committee?
Okay. That works. Good.
Sounds good.
Because I think the, the, the goals are overlapping.
Yes. Counselor Rhodes, did you have a question?
Thank you, Madam McCordough. I think most of my questions have been answered, but I just wanted to emphasize that historically in Assouus, we've had incredible successes with these kinds of setups and these committees and these kind of things. And would it be your intention, Director Davis, to chair the committee as up the protocol? And would we have a council member as part of that committee as well?
I would actually take that on for sure, as long as our CAO is okay with that.
I would see that's where it would stay.
I, I do have a background in accessibility issues and whatnot, because I have been involved with that. And it, I'm, I'm maybe not as passionate as Counselor Campbell, but I'm, I'm right there with him. So, I would definitely, and, and for sure, a council member, absolutely.
Yeah, I was going to suggest, if your answer was no, that we would encourage you to do otherwise.
So, are, you're going to set up the terms of reference, and then we'll come back and have a look at that, include a council member at that time?
Yes.
Okay. Does that work for everybody?
Okay, just maybe, any input on the, on the composition, because Counsel, Counselor Campbell mentioned somebody from the development, community contractor type of, is that, is there any other suggestions?
Business contractor, you mean?
Well, somebody in from the construction development industry, as we, we had oversight with the fire hall, that kind of thing, and maybe even look for that individual. But somebody that can, I, I think that these committees need to be productive and to have conversations with a realistic financial impacts when, when talking about options and decisions in that committee. I think there's a benefit to having somebody from that industry there that can speak to costs and, and some of the challenges with doing certain things.
Okay. Could that be considered then?
Yeah.
And somebody from the operations side of it, or not, maybe?
I think we would leave the, the, bringing staff to the table as needed.
Okay.
And with Gerald chairing the committee.
So, Mrs. Helson, do you need anything else from us? Do, you've got enough, we voted on it and everything? Okay, good.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is the Community Service Grants, and that's Mr. Davis again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Staff reviewed the grant applications with Counselor Campbell and Counselor King. We received over twenty-five applications and over a hundred thousand dollars in grant requests. We reviewed all applications and shortlisted the requests that fit our criteria. The amount of funding available this year was allocated at sixty-five thousand dollars. As part of this funding, we also allocated two thousand dollars for individuals and teams who compete at a higher provincial level. The policy states that grants can be approved for special events, facility rentals, tax requirements, special projects, and insurance expenses. The applicants must be nonprofit in nature and be providing a service to the residents of Assouus. Even though we cannot fund all applicable applications, we have made recommendations to share the funding accordingly. The goal was to provide funding to as many applicants as possible. In terms of options, for council to review and approve the recommended applicants and move to the regular meeting of council for approval. Option number two, for council to make changes to the recommended applicants, approve the changes and move to the regular meeting of council for approval. And option number three, for council not to approve grant, grant funding at this time. And, and the direction was, once council approves or makes changes to the recommendations, we can bring to the regular meeting for a formal resolution, and we're requesting direction.
Good. Thank you very much. Thank you to, to Director Davis and Counselor Campbell and Counselor King for reviewing these applications and coming up with suggested recommendations. Counselor Campbell, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Madam McCordough. Yeah, we spent a fair bit of time on this. Came back on it on, on a second meeting, because we had some questions and we wanted further information. I'm really comfortable with the way we've, we've allotted the funds. I, I wish we had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to give out, because I, I think, you know, the, the asks were all reasonable and, and really feel-good projects and organizations in the community. So, these are, these are tough decisions to make when we're looking at splitting up the pie and looking at the amount of asks and the different organizations that step up in our community. So, definitely challenging. But I'm comfortable with the results, and I'd like for council to review and approve the recommended applicants and move this to the regular meeting for council approval.
I'll second.
And Counselor King seconded that. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this? I, it certainly looks quite reasonable to me too, so I'm sure you looked at it carefully, and we appreciate you doing that. So, all in favor? Thank you very much. So, that will be brought this afternoon to a regular meeting. Mr. Romanco, was that the idea, that it would be brought this afternoon? Okay, thank you. Next is the Non-Medical Cannabis Retail and Community Implementation. Boy, there's a lot of, of information and changes and things. I mean, there's something in the paper today about it, they, in the province, but we'll let Mr. Romanco give us his report.
Thank you. Can you just sit, remove your chairs from the screen, please? Thanks. So, I like the board in the morning. Yeah. I got it right here, right here. So, attached, please find a summary of support information from Lidstone and Company and a presentation to the regional district board members that was previously provided to, to council in, in the email system. This information provides a most current overview of municipal government roles and responsibilities in the implementation of non-medical cannabis services. The legal sale of recreational-use cannabis is now scheduled for fall of 2018. In addition to this information, administration has completed a council-directed task to write the Minister of Public Safety and Sodisugeno and request that the local governments receive a minimum of fifty percent of the revenues that were made available to the provinces from federal government revenue-sharing agreement. At this time, the province has not provided any, an indication as to revenue-sharing with local government to cover local government costs of implementing non-medical cannabis services. A joint committee with the province, kind of a pun there, a little bit of a joint committee, in case you didn't notice that. A joint committee with the province and the local government, UBCM, is currently studying the issue. Additional information from the zoning bylaw 1085 is not provided that outlines current cannabis regulations in town. This information illustrates that no zone exists for retail cannabis, however, regulations exist for medical cannabis grow operations in the industrial zone. The existence of this legislation enables council to restrict retail shops from setting up until appropriate zoning is established by bylaw. The administration has had a preliminary discussion on this matter, and the need to implement actions has been identified in the 2018-2021 business plan and department work plans. As a part of this discussion, and council and the administration will go through the information and identify local issues, concerns, and opportunities. Council may also be aware that the administration has received calls from persons interested in establishing retail cannabis operations in Assouus. For purposes of this, this discussion, the administration is suggesting that we follow the RDS presentation and address the areas of following order, in the following order: spheres of regulation, retail, production, and public consumption. The administration is confident that council and administration will identify several local issues that need to be addressed during the course of the March nineteenth discussion. However, the administration has identified two topics of discussion for further action. The first relates to the extent that council provides direction to action public consultation relating to the overall implementation of cannabis services in the community above and beyond the normal public hearing process that accompanies zoning bylaw amendments. Public consultation may take many forms and has the potential to receive feedback on questions such as, should cannabis retail businesses be allowed in Assouus to start with? If yes, to the above, how many stores? Should retail be limited to public stores, or is there a need to consider private sector stores? Where should these stores be allowed to open and how should they be zoned? What are the hours of operation? What are the business license restrictions needed to be implemented? Where do we allow public consumption of cannabis? Additional considerations related to cannabis may include internal review of worksafe policies related to impairment, impacts on bylaw and RCMP enforcement, impacts on fire department response, provision of spaces adjoining public parks for illegal smoking of cannabis, development of clean air bylaw that would limit or identify smoke-free zones, should council make a decision on cannabis implementation prior to learning what revenue-sharing, if any, will be available from the province. The second topic relates to the provincial government's decision to allow consumption of cannabis in a manner that is similar to tobacco. The administration is of the opinion that use of cannabis in public venues places local governments in a very difficult enforcement environment. The smells of second-hand cannabis smoke are very intrusive and may have to be regulated beyond the current provincial statement of limiting to outside parks, beaches, and areas of children interacting. The province's decision to allow for public use of cannabis with no indication of allowing for venues for consumption places, places, community enforcement in a position of conflict between public users and people wanting clean air environment. The administration is also asking council to consider writing a letter to the province asking for the rationale for this decision and requesting that reconsideration of public consumption to incur or to create public consumption venues, given other provinces' decision to restrict consumption to private, and that should be residences, meaning houses, not individual residents, which I was corrected by former counselor.
Who's in the room?
He was in the room, making sure that I made that correction. Although legal sale and use of recreational cannabis is scheduled for this fall, the process is needed to implement bylaw changes require at least two months of formal, formal consultation processes to be in use. Beyond needed public hearing for the zoning, this situation is further complicated by the retailer needing municipal approval as part of their license application. The province is scheduled to make license application available this spring, at this, or summer. At this point in time, not, not all information has been made available from the province, so moving too quickly may result in the need to revisit some implementation areas. Terms of options presented to council, one, council identifies actions to be included in future staff reports to be taken to the April sixteenth regular council meeting for debate and decision. These actions to be considered for the report may include, first, an outline of public consultation that can be carried out within the capabilities of, or within the capacities of current staffing; two, an outline of public consultation that be carried out with an infusion of additional budget resources to hire consultant, consultation consultants; and three, options for proceeding without public consultation beyond the needed public hearing related to zoning. Council determines, second option, council determines its interest in seeking additional clarification from the province relating to the province's decision to allow for public consumption of cannabis and/or advocating for public cannabis-use venues. This item to be moved to the, this item to be moved to the March, March nineteenth council meeting without a staff report or to the April sixteenth meeting with a staff report. Three, council identifies action to be taken to the March nineteenth regular council meeting for debates and decision. So, council identifies areas of need for additional information. Administration is seeking direction relating to council's management of future public consultations on cannabis service implementation, and council's interest in requesting additional information from the province on the issue of public consumption and the establishment of public cannabis-smoking venues, and other information that council needs prior to making a decision. And just as, this morning, there's, and I'll be forwarding to council, there's an article in the, in the Okanagan paper that talks about California and, and their, their rules specifically limit smoking to private residences, but they're, they're dealing with the tasting room concept at the municipal level in, in San Francisco. So, additional information will be coming to council. So, yes, that's, that's the outline. So, I don't know if there's any questions right now?
Thank you. I would just like to, to tell you a little bit first, because when I was at the mayor's caucus in Squamish last week, the joint committee of Kerry Jang, who's a counselor from Vancouver, and Lisa Anderson, who is with Lidstone and Company, I believe, they gave a report to us. So, they did talk about many of the things that Mr. Romanco has mentioned, but basically, they're saying that the province is waiting for the federal bill. So, there's Bill C forty-five and Bill C forty-six that are, that are both being discussed right now. The province is basically looking at health and safety, reducing crime in the illegal market, protecting children concerned about drug-impaired driving, and act dev support. So, they went through a lot of the things that have already been mentioned, but it was interesting that Don Lidstone was there, and he said that distributed through B.C. liquor stores and licenses, and in Vancouver, it's thirty thousand dollars for a business license to, to open up one, one of these places, shops. So, one of the things that was mentioned, and it was on a slide, was they, they talked about all kinds of, you know, how, getting public, private input, municipal, public hearing to suit your own community. And next steps are revenue sharing, of course, ALR issues are a big, a big thing that they're still being worked on, and collaborate with the province to develop more detailed provincial regulations. So, that's exactly what Mr. Romanco brought up. The joint committee and the UBCM have come up with four recommendations, yeah, principles, actually. One is that regulation should not result in a local government funding by property taxpayers. The local government should be reimbursed for costs associated with legalized cannabis and for policing costs. This is what's being suggested, anyway. And the excise tax revenue after expenses should be shared between the B.C. government and local governments. So, interesting that there are, that there are so many different points of view on this, which is probably why the federal government has not come out with, you know, they're still trying to define what's going on and, and, and what should be happening and how to help the province, and then how to help the municipality. So, to my way of thinking, there's a lot of details that have to be worked out first. But I do like your suggestion about writing to, to say, where are we going to allow this? Because there certainly are different communities that have allowed a different, you know, not three feet, but seven feet or whatever it is, in front of doorways, and so we need to look at all of those things. Now, first of all, I have Counselor Rhodes and then Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam McCordough. What an awesome opportunity to rant about, about this particular subject, and as indicated, there are so many different aspects of it. This council that's sitting around this table is a veteran of previous debate already. We already went through this process. Because of our, our caution about the legalities of it, we chose to do almost nothing at the time, but now we're being faced with it. I'd like to start this little rant off with expressing my contempt and disappointment about federal and provincial governments downloading these kind of things on the small municipalities like our community. It's unfair, it's costly, when all of the legislation could be done at a federal level and make it a lot easier for everybody in local government to deal with this. Couple of the things that I would like to say and comment on is, first, I have never believed that government belongs in business. And we're talking an awful lot about restricting free enterprise in our community right now. And, you know, I get it, I understand the need for it, but I'd like to make a few comparisons. Everybody in this room and everybody that's listening has been touched by alcohol abuse in our community. I'd like to clarify that I like to drink. It's not about that, but, you know, a high percentages of highway deaths is attributed to alcohol abuse. There are addiction issues, there's family issues, and if somebody came to us... There are addiction issues, there's family issues, and if somebody came to us and wanted to open up a pub in our community, would we do the same thing that we're intending to do with, with this cannabis legislation in our community? The situation regarding odor, it's a big thing. People are offended by it. They relate the smell of cannabis to bad things. Myself personally, I don't. I kind of like it. Smells pretty good. I like the benefits of cannabis, health-wise, emotional, and other things that it helps people get through the day and be better at the end of the day because of it. Everybody in this room and everybody listening has been touched by tobacco abuse. It is a killer. Many, many millions of people have died attributed directly to smoking cigarettes. I find, and I say this out of due respect to anybody that's listening, I find tobacco smoke to be incredibly offensive. It's terrible smelling. Secondhand smoke is identified as a health risk. You don't get that from cannabis smoke. There is nothing that I was able to find in any of the research that I did over the weekend that attributes that horrible deaths that people suffer from tobacco. So, you know, in our, in our community and provincially, we have that three-meter barrier, you know, around public doorways and things like that. You know, to me, that's not enough. I'd like to see tobacco banned totally in our country and open up the door to cannabis because there are so many more benefits. So I don't want to get mixed up in our priorities and where we're heading down this path right now. When you make endless comparisons about things and you make decisions based on, on comparisons, there is a danger to doing that, realizing full well that I just spent the last five minutes making comparisons about it. But, you know, a lot of times it's important to do that. I just, I wonder about the influences of, you know, comparing to what we have and what we're being asked to do. Finally, just speaking about free enterprise, every one of these businesses will be probably privately owned. They will be businesses that have balance sheets and budgets and things to meet and that kind of thing, and when we do things that restrict, you know, business and the free enterprise process in our community, I just think that that's wrong most of the time, so.
Well, we hadn't heard a rant for a while, so thank you.
And I'm only getting started.
That was almost epic, and I, so first of all, I want to congratulate, congratulate C.R. Romanco for the pun, the joint meetings, but I strongly agree with councillor Rhodes when he talks about the free enterprise aspect of it. I don't think, you know, I've read some reports from other municipalities and the debates and conversations they've been having about bringing in consultants and making this a really complicated issue. At the end of the day, this is going to be legal and a legal business to operate, and it should be treated like any other business. Where I challenge councillor Rhodes, because we haven't debated in a while, is on the public consumption, and I've got a few things to say about that. So, we don't allow alcohol consumption out in public. We allow it within private businesses and private residences. There is an aspect of impairment to cannabis, and I've made no secrets as far as my position on cannabis. I've always felt it should be legalized and free enterprise. I've also, and my two reasons really are that I want to stop seeing families broken up and people going to jail for their involvement in it, and the health benefits specifically in our community with our demographics, I think is a benefit. But, we don't allow alcohol, we don't allow other drug, drugs to be used in the public square, and so I, I do believe it should be something people should do within their own residence, and if the, if the government allows private businesses to open doors for consumption purposes, that's fine with me, too. What I would like to see, and I haven't seen it in any of the federal or provincial framework, is, and my understanding is it won't be coming up for another year's time, is the consumption on the edible products of cannabis, which is the one area that really concerns me. I did a little bit of research by going into a few of the dispensaries in different municipalities, and the edibles are incredibly concerning when they're shaped as children's candy, chocolate, gummy bears, things of that nature. And I thought to myself, what's the one thing we hide from our kids in our home so that they don't go overboard with it, is sugar and candy? And the idea that there's, that there could be edibles on the market specifically designed to look like children's candy, I think is incredibly concerning, and I'll be shocked if, if the government allows that to happen. But I certainly don't think we need to complicate this process as I've seen other municipalities suggest. I, I believe in free enterprise. I think if it's a legal business, we should treat it as a legal business within certain parameters that the government's putting out as far as proximity to schools and parks and things of that nature. And as far as the, the public consumption, I don't agree that, that we should be allowing consumption out in, in public areas. I think it should be down to residents or private institutions.
Thank you. There are just a couple of things that I thought of when, when you were both talking, and now I can't remember where I'd circled them. Oh, I know, Health Canada, from this report, did, first of all, they're suggesting that, that illegal medical dispensaries will probably die out because the legal ones will have to be regulated federally with, with anything that comes in, and edibles within 12 months is what you were mentioning, C-45. But the Health Canada did test some pot in Vancouver, at the, at the ones that are in operation now, not sanctioned by the, by the feds yet, and many of them were tainted with, with pesticides. So, you know, presumably if, if it comes in, it's regulated and it's, and it's grown correctly, then you won't have those issues to deal with. But, there, there's way more to this issue that we're going to be hearing about for a while, and there's something in the paper today in the province about, you know, how they're having to hold off on one and concentrate on another, and, and it's very confusing. I just want to check to see if, if anybody else wants to, to speak first? Okay, councillor Campbell.
Thank you. It's a question that I'm not sure I know the answer to. In the states or the states that have gone ahead in the U.S. and legalized cannabis, part of the framework that's coming out here is the ability to grow marijuana within your residence unless you're part of a strata or an organization that doesn't allow it. In those states, I'm curious whether that was part of their framework on legalization? Because I, I say that because, you know, the question becomes, how successful will retail be if people are allowed to, to grow within, within their own residence? Do we know?
It's four plants per resident. I'm sorry, per residents, not per person.
No, I get, I get that, but I mean, it's going to be whatever people want to grow because I, I can't see Sergeant Bayden and his team going door-to-door to check heights and quantities of plants. So, at the end of the day, what it means is you can grow pot. And I wonder what that, how much that impacts the success of retail operations, if, if any of those states that have legalized have done both or just the one? We don't know.
Do you know? Because I don't remember reading about that.
No, I haven't done any research into it. There's, there's, just starting is unbelievable in terms of modern research.
I know. So, this committee in Vancouver is definitely continuing to have, to have meetings, and they're kind of waiting for the feds to come out with something a little more concrete first, and then hopefully it will come down to sort of the province, and you, I'm sure that we will hear it if we are at Silga or at UBCM this year because I don't know how they're going to get this all in place and, and deal with all of these things before the summer. Councillor King?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. From the previous two speakers, it sounds like they more likely would get support to open a store in this town, so I think one thing we could be looking forward in short term, we'd be identifying around the bylaws and locations of potential stores as a first step.
Do we not have something in a bylaw already that?
Well, we, we have, our zoning bylaw prohibits retail right now, so we would have to go through a process of identifying, you know, what other criteria in terms of locations that would be, the permitted use of retail for recreational cannabis. At this particular point in time, if I could just draw council back to the report, the, I included the, the presentation from the, to the regional district and also the Don Lidstone newsletter. There's been a lot of information to try and ensure that local governments know what their, you know, what the environment is right now. So, from what I'm hearing, there probably is no need to go through this information. Council is very comfortable with knowing, you know, what, what the environment is right now, but it's a matter of record that this has been provided to council as background information.
Just so that you know, though, this was put out at the beginning of February, and there have been, I'm sure, some adjustments needed on these reports from Lidstone. I mean, they were talking the other day, too. It could be. I'm sure most of them are.
I haven't, I haven't heard anything formally that would change the, the environment. Again, we would try and provide that to, to council within the package. At this point in time, there's, we're basically asking for direction in, in two areas, and I can appreciate that council, each individual councillor, just like every, every staff member has their opinion, we're looking for direction in two areas. One, does council want to do a public consultation on, on this particular topic? Or do you want to leave it to what would be the zoning process, the formal zoning process relative to the establishment of, of, you know, what council decides to do? And the second one would be, does council want to engage the province relative to the decision and seek out additional information? So that's the direction we're looking for right now, because we're looking down the road and saying, we have to be prepared, and it's having council and the community as best prepared as possible, and if we are going to do public consultation, we have to, we have to do a plan. We have to do a communication plan in and around it. So, we would like to get, get that direction from council right now, if at all, well, or, you know, if at all possible.
Councillor Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. I, I don't see the need to spend the time or money on, on public consultation on this matter. I think these become zoning issues and zoning issues that we can deal with here in council. We're talking about a product that, that's going to be legalized, which means people have their right to consume it, right to grow it, and the right to create business out of it. I think the only questions we really have to deal with are zoning issues, and I don't see the benefit in wasting time and money. I'd rather spend that time, if we need clarification from the, from the government on, on certain things, that we do that. You know, I, I, in hindsight, and I look back at the letter we signed, sort of switched topics for a sec, on, on the share of the, of the cannabis tax. I mean, it'll be interesting because I, I think that'll set some precedent. I, I believe that the municipality should also have a share of the provincial liquor tax as well. If we talk about putting strain on, on, on law enforcement and challenges in our communities, I, I think liquor, that liquor tax should be shared to help deal with some of those challenges as well. I, I don't feel the need to go to a, a public process on this.
Okay.
And tobacco tax?
That's taxed quite a lot already. I just want to point out that the mayors at the meeting last week were quite united in making sure that the, that the province and the feds understand that we need a share of these taxes because basically we're the ones that are doing, you know, stuff, everybody else is, is kind of saying, oh, yeah, this is fine, and then pass it down to municipalities. So, I'm not sure what that is yet, but many, many communities have written letters requesting a share, certainly about 50%. So, is there anybody going to support councillor?
Is that a motion?
It's a motion to move forward with.
Without consultation.
Yeah, and are you seconding that? Okay. Anybody else want to speak on that? Councillor King?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think you've actually identified a lot of the questions for your feedback, Barry, in your presentation that we, we would request, so I mean, it's pretty straightforward, I believe.
And, so, should we vote on this one first and then about writing a letter?
Yes, just for clarity, yes.
Okay, so, are we all in favor of this motion? Did you get that, Mrs. Hilsen? Thank you. So, is there somebody who'd like to make a motion on the other issue about writing to the province about, about their regulations? Yes, okay. Are you seconding that? So that would be the, the letter that, that Mr. Romanco is requesting, that we just ask for some clarification on distances. I think, was it Port Coquitlam that had already put this in? We got a report from one of the communities down the coast that has, for doorways, three meters, and they've changed.
Well, there's, there's a number, you know, of different ways communities have gone. I think the, if, and again, it's a signature for the mayor's, a letter for the mayor's signature, but I think it's just seeking clarification on the rationale for public use versus private residence use, but also the, you know, putting it out there relative to what the future is relative to, for lack of better terms, than what I heard this morning, tasting rooms or venues for, for public consumption so that we don't have the, the clean air interface and with, with additional, you know.
Barry, if I can comment on that for a second? I mean, I'm, I'm a believer that, that this change in legislation isn't going to mean that a much greater percentage of the population is going to start using cannabis. And the reason I disagree with councillor Rhodes is, these people are already consuming cannabis now without it being legal, and we don't allow it in the public square, and people have gotten used to not being able to do that in public, and we deal with it through law enforcement and by law enforcement. So I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a, it's a, it's a real issue. I think people are used to that already.
My only concern with that is, there are people that walk up and down the sidewalks right close to, and smoke. And so if, is that going to be an issue if people smoke marijuana on the, up and down Main Street, for instance, which they can, they maybe can do at this point because it's not.
Well, that's why I'm saying that we, I'm against consumption in, in public.
In the public, yeah.
And I think, I think people that use cannabis now are already quite used to that because you, you can't consume it publicly now. The cigarette thing on.
Cigarettes can be.
On CJ's rant, there is a whole different issue.
So, I'm, it's a good thing I'm in between you two, is that what you're saying?
He's got the tough beard on.
Councillor Rhodes?
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. So, just to emphasize the cigarette smoking in, in public, we do have some restrictions around public doorways and that kind of thing. Certainly Mayor McCordough alluded to the fact that you can walk down Main Street and there's always somebody smoking. We do have restrictions in our parks and that kind of thing, and I respect those, but they are, in essence, not enforceable by anybody. You can walk down to the beach at Cottonwood Park and pick up a handful of sand, and you'll have two or three cigarette butts in there and, and that kind of thing, so, you know, let's be careful with that. Just in rebuttal to the public consumption of alcohol, I think it's important to understand that in our community, we do encourage public consumption of alcohol. We have numerous beer gardens that are held in our parks around families. We just recently, you know, and with my blessing and encouragement, are going to have another public beer garden, basically on one of our beaches in Assouias during the car show, and I don't find anything wrong with them, but I do. I don't find anything wrong with them, but I do find something wrong with the comparison of those two, those two things, and I know I'm being argumentative, but it's important that public consumption of alcohol is encouraged by this council and, and members of our public as well.
I, I agree with your last statement, but where I'll challenge you is, is when we look at the amount of beer gardens we do for events, there's quite the process in terms of getting the permit to do that and meeting certain requirements to do that. To me, that's very different than, than just out in the public. You mentioned going down to Cottonwood Beach and taking a handful of sand and finding cigarette butts, and what I wouldn't want to see is kids putting handfuls of sand and pulling up roaches from a half-smoked joints while playing on the beach, and I think this opens the door to that. But I, but I, I agree that, you know, I have no issue with this entire concept of legalizing. I think there's, there's health benefit, I think there's a ton of benefit, and that we should be behind it. I just question whether it should be free rein and, and people openly consuming something that causes impairment out in public, which, which we don't allow, and under the circumstances that you suggested, it's done with a permit that requires security and planning and oversight from police and, and government in order to be able to do it.
Do we have a motion on this? We do. We have a motion. Carol?
It's hard to listen to us?
Yes. And do you have that? Could you read that back, please, that motion that was moved and seconded?
That council directs staff to write to the province requesting clarification relating to the decision to allow for public consumption of cannabis and allow the establishment of public cannabis-smoking venues that is prepared with the mayor's signature.
Well, we were on topic.
Okay, is that all right? All right, let's, let's, are we ready to vote on this, then? All in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. Are we finished with the pot issues for now? Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
It's high time we end the meeting there.
Could we have a motion to adjourn this meeting, please? Councillor Youngberg, councillor King, all in favor. Thank you very much. So, I, I see all the.